Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this meeting of Independence District 534 order. And Clerk, will you take roll, please?
Ruby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Stephen Viglison.
Here.
Missy Hermes present. We have a forum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So move.
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And as a crew, we have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Leland Potter for the donation to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. And congratulations to IQ Academy Counselor Carla Cummings for being named the Counselor of the Year by the West Central School Counselors Association. Could someone offer that resolution for adoption?
So move.
And a second?
A second now.
Clerk, will you take roll, please?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viglison.
Yes.
Ruby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And this morning, we have some reports. So we have Mary Madison here from Community Education. Good morning.
Good morning. This is a different podium, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just fine. I handed out pack to you this morning. And also, thank you for allowing me to be here. Fergus Falls Community Education. Our vision is to provide opportunities for lifelong learning, responding to community interests and needs, utilizing all available resources to facilitate the exchange of knowledge and wisdom among all members of the community. We provide leadership resources and support services within our community to develop and sustain leading-edge programming and services. We believe the role of Community Ed is to ensure awareness and accessibility to quality opportunities and resources that are inclusive of the needs of all community members, from birth to senior citizens. We respond with perseverance, resiliency, dedication, and professionalism. Community Ed has an advisor council that's committed to supporting and serving our community, and they are an advisor to us and everything. Of Fergus Falls Community Education, we reach more than 19,000 people every year through direct mailing. We send our Community Ed brochure twice a year. We also, in the past, have done the back-to-school brochure. And that's what our census, it's about 19,470 is based on and everything. And that's how we receive funding. We work with over 34 community education, community agencies to work collaboratively with us to co-sponsor another number of events. And some of the things we've done over the years, we've got a DWI Safety Seminar. It's offered five sessions a year through Community Ed. And we are with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, DWI Clinic Number 28A. And this is a collaborative partnership with Otter Tail County Human Services, Fergus Falls Police Department, Otter Tail County Attorney's Office, and Otter Tail County Court Administration. We also offer a variety of classes that aid in economic development by preparing people for the workforce. Computer classes, starting your own daycare, which they've had an increase, and child passenger safety seat cars, which is required for childcare providers, heart saver and pediatrics, first aid CPR, AED pool and refresher suits and AHT. Those are all required. We have lifeguarding and recertification class. We had also a WSI class this past weekend. And I just had an email on that that I opened this morning. Parents Forever, that has been offered through Community Ed for 26 years. We were one of the original pilot sites. This program is in collaboration with Otter Tail County Court Administration, the Otter Tail County Judges. Parents Forever is an educational program for all families experiencing divorce, separation, and change in custody. After completing the course, we hope the family can describe the family transaction journey and how each member will be affected, recognize the role of self-care for the parent. If the parent doesn't take care of himself, they're no good to their child. Identify internal and external resources and strategize how to leverage these resources to promote resiliency for all involved. Last year, we offered 12 classes or events for adults with disabilities. And this is likely exciting. And let me see. In 2025, for the first time, we will get .34 per capita for funding from the state through aid. And we're not going to have to apply for this. It first came about in the 60s, late 60s, and only 20 school districts in the state were tapped to receive these funds. We have offered a program for adults with disabilities ever since I came here. So there's nothing new. They were a part of the community, and I felt that they needed education. And so we will reap some benefits in a couple of years for the first time. A stroke support group, we offered that the third Thursday of the month. Total attendance last year was 140 people. We also have, you'll see at the end, the Community Ed facility was used 351 times last year, our facility. And we'll go over that in a little bit. Mary Rosted, our Drivers Ed Coordinator, was presented with the Minnesota Drivers and Traffic Safety Education Association. It's called MITC, Teacher of Excellent Award, held at its 56th Annual Conference on March 31st and April 1st. This is to a member who has contributed a career full of hard work, passionate accomplishment for the driver's education and also for their contribution to the MITC organization. Jennifer Kraus, and we've got Kep, who will be our two new drivers' education staff people. And we will have a third one that will complete in August this year. Also, we get into driving again, two down. 189 students completed Drivers Education Classroom and 190 completed behind the wheel in 2022, 2023. We had an opportunity to apply to offer permit testing in October of 2020. We applied to administer the web-based Class D Knowledge Test to Drivers Education students upon completing the classroom portion of Drivers Ed. We only contest our own students. We can't take people from any other school districts if they have not been in our program. In December 2020, we were approved to administer the tests. And in the year of 2022, we tested 238 kids and still are continuing to test into 2023. Let me see. We have open swim from 7:00 to 9:00 on Friday nights. And also, we have a homework help program that helps equalize those who need a little extra help. That's Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 8:10 a.m. And also Thursdays from, that's Monday, through Friday in the morning. And Thursday, from 3:20 to 4 o'clock, we have homework help. Two grants a year ago were applied for. Inga Johnson Grants consisted of $2,500. The second grant was the Resilience Fund, consisting of $16,000. Both grants were written and submitted by myself, Kristen Tool, and Kristi Sullivan for Kitchen at the ELC. The project was completed in February this year. I always have said Community Ed is fast, friendly, and flexible. And we put structure into an idea, and this could not be achieved without the team efforts. Amy Searle. We also have a number of community partnerships that we work with youth. On the next page, Otter Pride, Career Expo, Ski Andies, Tower Hills. That's 11 evenings from December 2nd to March 24th. And we have an adult chaperone, usually a teacher on the bus. And we have not had any answers at all. Simpson Swimming Show dates were April 21st, 22nd, 23rd, aquatics. We do lifeguard training, lifeguard recertification, water safety instructor, and diving camps were offered. And diving camps she had, next year, we're going to have to restructure. She had quite a few this year, and surprised. And I said, that's a sign of a great program. So anytime we do programming, I sit down with our people, and we reevaluate it, what went well and what could we improve for the following year. We have a Lego Club. They're at Community Ed. It's probably about 40 kids. And it's a partnership with Otter Tail County 4-H, University of Minnesota Extension. ATV course, that will happen in July this year, a partnership with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Andrew Goodman is the DNR instructor. And we have a Junior Rifle Club. And also volleyball, we had 81 participants in that. In the fall of 2022, we will have that again this fall. Cross-country, Nikki Weldy, we had 46 participants this year. Firearms safety, we were very pleased to be able to have that once again. We, I brought some training in because we needed a new group of people to take over because the other ones had retired. So we did that in April. We've had Camp Emily, LB Homes, Agreed Support Day Camp, Blast Babysitter Training, also Youth Snowmobile Safety, that was in January. Adopt a Class, Community Ed secures the funding for 61 classrooms, which receive a donation of $100 to an elementary, to their classroom. Also, self-defense training for women. That was a free event sponsored by Someplace Safe, Community Education, and also the Fergus Falls Police Department. Summer Reading Program, we do funding for that. That's with the Fergus Falls Public Library. Playbuster Trap Team, we're involved with that. Also, School of Fish, we had 33 students participate. That's a partnership with Fergus Falls Fish and Game Club. And also, my fish is, Frish is the instructor. This year, we started Archery Boys and Girls Club, and we had 20 students. They were, we received grants from Minnesota DNR, Minnesota Deer Hunting Association, Lake Area's Gobblers, Otter Tail Power Company to make this possible. Certified instructors at the time were Dave Sanderson, Jeff Struck, Chad Waits, and Tom Johnson. We have more that have been trained and certified since that time. The next page, I'm not going to go into everything in detail, so I'll highlight a couple of them. When we started the school year in August 2022, 2023 school year, we had a new facelift to our space. And we received new carpet that was long overdue. But I said, space will not define my performance. I think 15 years prior, I was told that we would get new carpet. And once I said to one of our superminuts, I said, you know, I could even work out of my fifth wheel. And he says, Mary, you better not say that because someday you might have to. Then we have space shortage and everything. So, no, it did need to be updated, and we appreciate what ISD 544 did. When you start doing one thing, it led to the next thing. The window treatments were rotten, and that's, the fibers had disintegrated and everything. And they could no, many of them could no longer be open and closed. They were vertical blinds. So if you haven't seen our facility, please stop in. New carpet, new window treatments. We have 22 new tables and 200 chairs. And when we go down this list just quickly, I will tell you, we've had people in there daily. ELC is down there. People from Lakefront Mental Health are in our facility. And we accommodated them all very graciously. In August, you know, basically, we had permit testing. You can see we do a lot of permit testing. And we do receive a $10 fee every time we permit test. September, we had permit testing, cost of oil meeting. We had a work-based learning, which Catherine Anderson on September 12th, which lists students and business leaders throughout the community. And also, let's see, some other things. You guys know how to read well, so I'm not going to go into all of them in detail. In October, again, permit testing. We had Lego Clubs, ELC was down there. PSATs, also Drivers Education, Core Expo. We had a class on identity theft, fraud, and scams. And we had a quilt retreat. We had over 40 people in the quilt retreat, and that was two days. November, we had a Spanish class, Sally Disbar. She had various schools in, and they were all amazed at our wonderful facility. That's nice when we can, when people do recognize that. We also have barn quilts in there on a Saturday. We have lots of Saturday classes because if you're going to meet the needs of the people, my audience is usually people that work during daytime hours, and weekends are usually easier. United Way Backpack Program. We had 30 kids come from Kid Hijack's classroom and stuffed backpacks so they could do the entire process. They worked with us at Service Food, and then the food got transported to my area the next day and everything. And then they came over to fill the backpacks so they were ready to go home with people in, just prior to Thanksgiving. In December, we had a Santa's Gift Workshop. That was for adults with disabilities. They took care of it themselves. I sit down with them, and we find what will be the best solution, a very low-cost items. January, again, classes. February, Fergus Falls Playbuster. We had their organizational meeting, which was a number of people. And then I'm going to go to March. When we do any of our Drivers Education programs, we have 40 students in a class. So, and incidentally, last week, we needed another TV. On Thursday, we owned two TVs, and I purchased the third one. I knew this was going to be coming because we had people in sessions in all four areas. We have our area, which is north, which we do Drivers Ed. Then the big area, when you come in, we had Scott Colback was there for, with his staff, about 72 of them. We were able to accommodate them very easily. And then we had a foundation meeting and another meeting at 2:00. Every space was taken. That's exciting. I get energized when we are full and everything. We've also had backcourt meetings at our place. And Otter Cove needed a place to meet, and they asked us. And Jeff and I, Drake, Superintendent Drake, we speak, and we're not charging them anything. And let me see. In April, we had IQ, they tested in our area. We had permit testing, we had a quilt retreat. We had a retirement meeting, which was retirement, charting your own plan. And it was, basically, we're hoping to educate adults. And that was with Steve Githardson and also the county and myself, that after they retire, they're going, they need something to take care of themselves, either volunteering, and volunteering's at no cost, or working part-time. It was well-received. We had about 55 people at it. We had self-defense class, the Fergus Falls Police Department, Someplace Safe, and ourselves. We did the first one at City Hall, and that's where they wanted it. And Kevin Sonstible, he said our space was great because you can teach at the one end and then bring them to the center. And the tables that were purchased are very neatly stacked upon each other. It's just amazing how little space they take and everything. Some of the other functions in May, we had Chamber Cafe. And we must have had 60 to 70 people there. They asked if they could be at the facility the same time next year in May. And that's exciting. Let me see. Drivers Education. We had, in June, we had Love and Logic, which was the teachers' meeting on June 8th. We also had Drivers Education the same day. They both needed TV. And then we had a foundation meeting. And then we had a board meeting and everything. We had 72 in attendance. And on June 2nd, we had IQ Academy Reception. We had, Ryan Johnson had about 120, 125 people in attendance. And they were very pleased. Before, they were at the golf course, I think. And then they'd come over to Kennedy. It was a shorter trip. They knew where they were going to go because I could tell them and other people there could give them everything that they really needed. Some other information that's going to be very helpful in beginning and fiscal year '25, Community Ed's revenue will increase from 542 per capita, and I don't think I have that written there, to 635. Anytime you go up, it's good. That's what Superintendent Drake says. And then also, again, adults with disability, they are going to be, we will receive .34 per capita for our levy, you know, what we have for our numbers for our levy and everything. And we've never received any state aid. And that will begin in '25 also. And then I did give you a last sheet about early childhood. We were hoping, and Melissa Amundson was hoping, that we would hear really great things. Early Learning Scholarships, they've appropriated $252 million for '24, '25, and $58 million, $58.9 million for '26 and '27. It's an, it will be increases. We don't know exactly how this is going to be rolled out and everything, but it's not for next year. Also, early childhood health and developmental screening, aid is going to increase. And again, the word increase is positive. And it's going to be $98 for a child screened at age three, $65 for a child screened at age four, and $52 for a child screened at age five or six prior to kindergarten, and $39 for a student screened within 30 days after first enrolling in public school and everything. This is a 30% increase, so again, that is positive. And so, anyway, that, when you look at Melissa's, this was completed the end of May for me. And there still could be changes. This is what her enrollment would look like, what the options they would have. It has been very robust and everything. And there will be an increase in scholarship funding, so potential to increase the amount we were allocated. That's what she was hoping for. I don't think that is right now. School readiness, increased seats will impact. She didn't believe that that would be next year, but we could maybe get some more in '25. And they're going to make the 4,000 expiring seats permanent in, in funding for '24 and add another 5,200 seats in '26. Childcare Visitor Program, you can see how they serve 14 childcare providers and a total of 122 children. And then what she does for fundraising, grocery seats from Service Food. We used to have two places in town here that we could get things from, we no longer do. Also, she does a fundraiser and foundation grant and wish list, which she's applied for at the end of May for the next school year. And then Adopt a Class, which is $600 for six classrooms, teachers. I'm the one that was securing the business partners. So I thought, you know, if I'm doing the work, I'm going to take care of my own people too, you know, for her. So each of her teachers are a part of that. So, anyway, that is what I have to report in a nutshell. And I thank you much.
Thank you, Mary. All right, we'll move on to our next order for Mary.
Yes, Finance Committee, we did meet Natalie and Jeff and Devane and I on May 22nd at 4:00 in the afternoon, and we went through some different scenarios with the budget, looked at all of the different funds. And that will be reflected in the final reading today of the budget for next year. Talked a little bit about ATS and R, the chiller. Looked at balances in Community Ed, food services, and so on. And we talked a little bit about some of the impacts with the legislation and how it's going to affect this. So that was the Finance Committee. 544 Foundation, we've had, actually, had two meetings since we last, we had a report on that. We met on May 11th. And a couple of highlights there were, at that time, preparing for the retired staff reunion, which was very successful on the 18th of May. Talked a little bit about the successful senior recognition ceremony. Again, that was coming up at that time, and that went very well also. I believe there was, each teacher last year got $100 to spend on supplies, and some of them didn't use it. So I think the money that didn't get spent came back to the Foundation. And then I believe that they returned back. And then I believe that they returned back to us in the Angel Fund. So I think that was about seven, four hundred dollars. We met again last week on Thursday, June eighth. And went through, the classroom wish list was, the deadline was, was Friday of last week. And at that time, on Thursday, there was forty-two requests in. I think the email went out Friday morning that that was the last day. So hopefully we got some more back in that day. Class unions are starting to line up this year. There's so far, six of them lined up that are coordinating with the Foundation. And a couple of dates in the future, the Legends Committee is doing the golf outing of one of our major fundraisers for the Five-four-four Foundation, July fourteenth. That's a Friday. And then other things coming up, Back to School and Service Lunch, probably August thirty-first is our tentative date for that. Out of Pride Night, September fifteenth. And then the Homecoming slash Hall of Fame events, September twenty-ninth and thirtieth. So that's my report of the Five-four-four Foundation. And our Curators Committee did not meet, so.
Any questions for Kirby? All right, we'll move on to Melanie.
The Special Education Cooperative will meet today, minus the director. She got a doctor's note to pass today. We're going to talk about hiring and set up the interview panel today. And that's going to be the primary agenda there. Region one meeting last month, we reviewed, we've kind of been in a budget review because we had several months where we didn't meet. And so we're still, we reviewed the, last month, we reviewed the proposed budget and then, and then just reviewed it again. So anyway, and then staffing, just the migration of seasoned staff away and how to fill in behind them. So that was primarily, yeah, that's about all I have.
Any questions for Melanie? Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Yerms.
Okay, the Staff Development Committee met on Monday, June fifth. And it was an opportunity to say thank you to some of the outgoing people from the that committee that have served for a long time and their terms were up. There was, we went over the budget and then already there are teachers that have signed up and are going to be taking trainings during the summer and literacy and then understanding and implementing foundational methods to prevent behaviors. Then also already, the planning has started for the Staff Development Day, which is going to be December first. And it looks like the keynote speaker might be Mr. Drake.
I'll give a district, well, we're going to not like that. No, I will address all of the staff on district updates. But we hope to secure a speaker on artificial intelligence and things like chat, GPT, those kinds of transforming the world in certain education.
Excellent. And then Policy Committee, already reading things, preparing things. And don't worry, we'll be meeting a lot this summer. There is a lot.
Any questions for Ms. Yerms? Okay, my Board Reports, our Minimal Wellness Committee has not met. Buildings and Grounds has not formally met. So we'll move on to Matt Lunkie.
Yeah, Minnesota High School Week met on Tuesday, June sixth. Just some highlights for us. They did pass approved behavior guidelines and expectations directive that students and adults to be implemented by member schools. So it's going to be some things that our A D will have to give to us just to see if there's anything different than what our expectations already are. So from the Central Lakes Conference. Also, the member dues and activity fees, which I am going to write, since we do have some board members that are actually on that committee, I'm going to write them. They are looking at their budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. The final action and determination of the membership dues and activity fees will be based on the twenty-two, twenty-three year-end financial report. But the problem with that is, of course, is that the information doesn't come to us until August, which we've already adopted our budgets, which I first, so, which they should know. So anyway, I think they need to relook at it. And I, and I wouldn't, my suggestion to them would be more to take spring or the following year before and go through fall and winter and base your budget off of that. So that you're giving us the information in June, so that we can actually, maybe in May, so that we can actually budget for their increases, which isn't tremendous. But there has been years of that, it's gone up quite a bit. So it's just good to be able to have that information when we're actually doing budgets. And a couple of other things that they're working on. Mental Health Suicide Prevention Model is nearly complete. And so they have been working on that with a couple of consultants. And Concussion and Student Athletic Video has been updated. And then the other one that they put in, which is approved, was Sports, Medicine Advisory Committee for Recommendation on Air Quality Guidelines. Some additional information coming out on that, so.
Suicide prevention, is that focus that all students, focus on all students or just toward the student athlete or?
I would believe it's towards the student athlete. But I would think that there'd be some carryover to just everyday students too. I wouldn't think it'd be just exclusive to that. But I would say that the focus is probably intended towards the student athlete.
Matt, the first one that you mentioned about behaviors.
Yes.
Is that also, is that going to also address behaviors of people that are watching? Of course, not just the coaches, not just athletes, people in the stands.
And I think that's where they're actually aiming at, is the fans. That's where the adult part of this. Just because of things that have been hacked, that had been in the news just of some different school districts and stuff that have been dealing with and mess of the high school week in general and things of that. And just again, having that common expectation for, regardless of whatever school district you're going to, to compete at, that that expectation should be at least, this is the minimal. And I think that's, I think it's a good thing to have.
Matt, with the air quality guidelines, is that for indoor venues or for outdoor?
I would believe it's just all for outdoor.
Outdoor, so with wildfires and things like that?
Correct.
Okay.
So they could possibly call it in because of smoke? Is that what they kind of?
I would, I don't want to, I don't want to speculate because I haven't seen the guidelines. Because they don't include their packets within their minutes. But I would say that I would imagine that's part of it.
That's our report.
And then we'll move on to State of the Week.
My report is minimal because Kirkland View is not meeting till the fall, so.
And then Superintendent Drake.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We have made it through another school year. This is the culminating event. So very nice group of students graduated. There were some folks that had indicated they weren't going to make the ceremony, but were able to make it. So some of you probably witnessed some chairs being added out there in the seating to accommodate everyone. But we anticipated about a hundred and ninety-five students across the stage. So congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-three. And we certainly wish you the best moving forward. Both the ALC and the Ferguson Falls High School graduation ceremonies were very, very nice events. I appreciate everyone that participated in organizing and speaking. And the music was fantastic. There was a lot of work on our custodial and mechanical crew, making sure that everything was ADA accessible. And did a lot of work managing the cooling system since we were not at full capacity to make sure we had a comfortable venue for our graduates and guests. So many thanks to everyone that was involved in that. Some additional thank yous to all those folks whose work year has not ended quite yet but are going through and working with our students over the summer. Appreciate that very much. We did some end of the year celebrations. And Catherine Anderson gave some words as the outgoing Teacher of the Year. And we recognized our Support Staff of the Year at an end of year event. And there's Catherine there. This was a copy of the program for that. And then we had a lot of end of year highlights. So we had second graders at Maplewood State Park, learning about maples, how to make maple syrup. Mrs. Smith, Kathy Smith, had her students become published authors. And while we're talking about Kathy, she also did the Love and Logic training. And the venue at Community Ed was really, really well received for that training. It's really been transformed into a very, very nice space for the district. We had some students that were doing some work in the community gardens and then some glow-in-the-dark work that was tied to some math lessons, et cetera. And I do want to highlight some of the community service that's going on because that is part of our portrait of a graduate. And our vision for out of graduates is that we want to be actively involved in contributing to our community. This was the High Mileage Car that took fourth place in Brainerd. And some more community service with our Reach Kids, planting, I think it was sunflowers that they were doing there. That was a picture on the right that I referenced in a late superintendent's column with students being able to operate some heavy equipment and machinery out at the rec parking lot, which was a great opportunity. And then Mindy Christensen's juniors had an opportunity to get out and do some work. They were at D Lagoon. They were also at the library and various other places, just volunteering some services at the end of the year. So all very, very nice things going on. This was a photo of the fourth grade end of by year culminating event at Prairie Science. And one of the really nice things about that event is that the students give a reflection on their year at the Prairie. And they give that before their parents and grandparents and their peers. And that's always very heartfelt and really indicates what a unique experience that is for students. That is a picture of some students in Mrs. Leach's classroom. They were very entrepreneurial. This group of girls had made and were selling jewelry. But there were some boys selling fishing lures. There were multiple food stations which you could, where you could purchase food. One young man is a budding artist and he was selling his art. And so this was a nice, really nice activity that was set up right out here in our foyer. This is a reminder to the community that we are going through a weight room renovation project. And if you have interest in donating towards that, please contact the school or the Five-four-four Foundation. And then happening over the summer, we did get the legislation passed for Lincoln Phase Two. We are working with M D E just to get the I's dotted and T's crossed. Ellers has been working with us. Peter Martin has been working with us as well at Zurburg on the architectural side and Preston Early with R.A. Morton. So we will be coming together, sending out a solicitation for bids on the project. It's estimated to be somewhere likely in the twelve-plus million dollar range. And we expect to have that project, if all goes well, completed by mid-July next summer. That will allow us an opportunity to move the kindergarten into that facility and then move some other grades as a domino effect tumbling out of there, which will create a little bit more elbow room at KSS, which has been pretty packed the last couple of years. We are still working to secure a site for a potential new elementary. And we would like that site secured this summer. And more information about that proposal will be going out to the community soon. And with that, I just thank everyone for a great year and all the hard work and wish everyone a very, very nice summer. Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our general consent items. We have the minutes, the twenty-second board meeting and the bills and treasuries report.
Yes, the treasures report, our fund balance is up about four million dollars from last month. And that's primarily because we got one of our large tax levy payments came in. And so that's a timing thing. But so up a little bit from, or up quite a bit from last month, but down about, about five hundred thousand from last year. So so a pretty, pretty standard timing thing this fund. Melanie and I came in early this morning and went through the bills with Renee. We looked at a number of things, Mall of America, we had the IQ trip to, to the cities. Robotics, we've got just under eight thousand dollars that went for the robotics program. Probably a little celebration, Lincoln Phase One, final payment of eighty-three thousand dollars. So so good to see that. Eighty-five thousand dollars for bleachers over Roosevelt. And that's a pass through from some of the donations that have been made to that, that project. Twenty-two thousand dollars for a timer in the pool. Couple hundred thousand dollars towards a chiller, which is now working at just under, under, around half to sixty percent capacity, I understand. So we had fourteen thousand dollars for some drinking water fountains, some work down the Cleveland compressor, we had a bill come through for that. Did some assessments to the, some of the work, the street work that the city did over McKinley. And I think other than that, that's about it. We had a bill we had to pay, I guess the elevator wasn't working the night of prom, so we had to have an emergency call there. So we had to approve that payment of about thirty-five hundred dollars. So that's what I have for bills and treasures reports. So thanks to Renee for having everything ready for me and for Melanie for coming in early today. Any questions on that? Just a housekeeping thing. Renee has asked, we have a new person coming in, in to help with, with the, with the bills and everything. So we've discussed and I think we're looking at going forward with doing bills twice a month, starting in August.
August?
August. And that will help us with timing and getting some payments out in time and getting discounts and not being late. And so so that just means that I'll come every, every, every meeting. For you folks, it'll be twice as many times per, per year. But but we'll also be going through only half as many bills. So so I would anticipate as far as the agenda, we would have, just in the general consensus, we'd have just the bills in our second month, right? That's okay with everybody? All righty? That's my report.
All right, personnel.
Good morning, everyone. I kind of have my own page again. So I'll run through these as quick as, as possible and not go into the detailed information, which is all in front of everyone, which will be, which is also on the agenda on our website and long winter minutes. So Support Staff resignations, excuse me. Danielle Ross, Title One Para. Rachel Venberg, non-public nurse. Sarah Campa, truancy interventionist. And Sarah is just accepting a different position within our school. Sarah Cook, Special Ed Para. She too is accepting a different position with her school district. Angela Gladback, Special Ed Para. Under Support Staff Retirement, Amy Teetz, Special Ed Para Professional. And later on in our agenda, we do have a resolution on her retirement. And I believe she's been with us for twenty-four years, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, twenty-four years. So long-term employee. And prior to that, twenty-four years, she worked as a sub for us besides. Under Support Staff Hires, Christina Baglow, part-time floater custodian. Jessica Bosberg, accounts payable and purchasing associate. Jamie Sem, Para educator in our health office at Cleveland. Sarah Campa, she'll move over as a high school principal, assistant principal secretary. Scott Samuelson, he has a position change from mechanical worker to groundskeeper. Sarah Cook, she's went from that Special Ed Para to a Para educator at our Prairie Science class. And Verna Manosa, Para educator at Adams. Support Staff Contract Changes, these went through the comparable worth process that I did personally. So I propose that there's a grade change to a five for our delivery operator, which falls under the custodian contract. And that previously was a four. And then a grade change to a six for activities office assistant, which is under the secretary contract. And that previously was a grade five. So both of them went up one grade. Two job description changes. Certified Staff Leave of Absence Requests, we have Lana Orin, IQ Language Arts Teacher, requesting a one leave, one-year leave of absence. And Daniel Sternberg, elementary teacher, he's requesting extended leave of absence. And just for a note, it's a one-year is what he's requesting. And then Certified Staff Hires, we have Gabrielle Frederickson and David George, both elementary teachers, assignments to be determined. Jessica Holland, high school reach teacher, and Nathan Dreisath, middle school P E teacher. So I'd recommend all these personnel changes for school board approval. So I'd recommend all these personnel changes for school board approval.
Can I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion?
I'd like to see the narrative on the leave of absence to say a one-year leave of absence rather than extended, just to be technically correct.
And to be, the reason it says extended is so that that person can purchase service credits during that one year. And that's language that T R A has to have for that piece. The other person has a different type of leave that qualifies for purchasing service credits. So that is a reason that there's a little difference between those two. It's allowing both staff members to purchase those service credits for their pension plan.
How do we define then, in the absence of that language, how do we know it's a one-year leave if we approved just extended?
I guess because of the letter that we have on file.
Okay.
Does that, that's about the best I can explain it, but Jeff, do you want to add anything more further on that?
No, the employee has made it clear it is just a one-year request.
Okay.
But in good faith, to allow him to purchase credits towards his pension, I think that this is an appropriate request on his part.
Okay. And just to clarify, nothing that's strong staff member. I just am recalling a period of time as a board when we did a variety of extended leaves, and that didn't work well for the staff that came in the wake of that. So that was my underlying logic there, so.
And the T R A kind of rather complicates things also for those service credits. So unfortunately, the wording that we have to use is per T R A versus what I prefer as a documented item. And I did explain that to Mr. Sternberg also.
Okay.
So I did have conversation.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. There's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have fiscal year twenty-four membership with Minnesota School Boards Association and Policy Services. Can I get a motion to approve that membership?
So moved.
And a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. We have award for the fiscal year bread bid to Panagol. Can I get a motion to approve that bid?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll move to Commercial Insurance Policy Package through B M C Insurance for a total estimated cost of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Could I get a motion to approve that package?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That policy package is approved. We'll go on to Worker's Compensation Policy through First Dakota Indemnity Company for a total estimated cost of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Can I get a motion to approve that policy?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That policy is approved. We have the fiscal year twenty-four budget final reading. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Renee, do you want to add anything here, Kirby?
Sure, at the first reading, we were looking at a negative sixty-four thousand balance for revenue over expenditure for the general fund. Right now, I'm projecting it to be around three thousand negative. The main reason for the changes were on the legislative impacts. Only two of those mandates will affect us this year. The other two are actually the following fiscal year. And then also the property insurance and the workers' comp insurance that you just approved. Those are significantly compared to what I had in the budget, and so the total between the two is about fifty thousand, so that also impacted it quite a bit.
Any questions, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That's what your budget is approved. So we have a resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation facilities maintenance, capital facilities, and tax abatement bonds, Series Two, twenty-twenty-three A, in the aggregate principal amount of approximately thirteen million, six hundred thousand dollars, and taking other actions with respect thereto. This is an additional two and a half pages of information, actually three and a half pages. So the details are all stated here within the agenda and also posted on the website if anybody wants more information. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second.
I offer, please, to call?
Yes.
Steven Vigessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lumke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, we have a resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Resolve that the governing board of Fergus Falls Public School District Number Five Forty-four located in Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic activities and athletics referred to in Minnesota Statute Section one twenty-eight C dot zero-one to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the school listed and authorized by this the governing board of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that this governing board or entity hereby adopts the Constitution, bylaws, policies, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file at the office of the school district or school, or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities and athletics. Further, the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board or entity. Could someone offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Missy, will you take call, please?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lumke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Steven Vigessa?
Yes, only because we have to.
The resolution is adopted.
We have a resolution on the retirement of Amy Teats, whereas Amy Teats began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in September nineteen ninety-nine, and whereas Amy has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past twenty-four years, and whereas Amy has been a dedicated aid of Mastering Instructor and Special Education Paraprofessional for the district. And now therefore, we get resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Amy Teats for her twenty-four years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools.
I'd like to offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Missy, will you take call, please?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lumke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Steven Vigessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. So next, we have a motion to move into a closed session permitted by Minnesota's statute thirteen D dot point zero-five subdivision three to discuss developing offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property, parcel seven one zero zero one five zero 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 five five zero zero zero. So can I get a motion to close our board meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Our meeting is closed.